K L T V sun check.[655.40][655.40[S01] K L T V sun check.
K L T V sun check.
Morning everyone, welcome to Tuesday meeting of the B O C C. We have invocation this morning led by Pastor Charles from Kelso First Baptist.
Father, we thank you for your presence. And we ask today that you allow your spirit to gently rest upon everyone here. We ask that peace is the motivator, love is the controller, and that stewardship comes upon this room. We thank you that we can have conversation, disagreements, many different things, but the peace never has to be disturbed, that we gently move with each other. And we thank you, Lord, that you're here. So we ask for your guidance, let your will be in this room, and let us all recognize that every human being is the image and likeness of God. And so we pray this, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Those who want to join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would entertain a review motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the minutes of April 28th through 30th.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of April 28th to 30th. Any comments, questions, corrections? Okay, I'm seeing none. Call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We'll go through consented, first thing on consent agenda today is a proclamation we approved yesterday on National Police Week in Callous County, and I'll read this, read this for you. "To recognize the National Police Week 2025 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Callous County Sheriff's Office. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 26,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have, in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including Justin DeRozier, a member of the Callous County Sheriff's Office. Whereas the names of those dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. Whereas 174 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 165 officers killed in 2024 and nine officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 37th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 14th, 2025. Whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 11th through May 17th. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore be it resolved that the Callous County Commissioners will observe May 11th to 17th, 2025 as National Police Week in Callous County, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation." And we will sign this and get this over, but I think we had a couple from the chaplaincy that maybe wanted to chat just a little bit on this.
Want me to talk or you?
I got my own.
You both got one.
Thank you Commissioners for the resolution and the proclamation. Tom Hahn is our second most senior chaplain, I being the older guy. He has a couple of things he'd like to share.
Thank you Commissioners for having us today. Wow. Excuse me. One of the things I've learned over time is if you want to have a colorful Facebook page, you should have some law enforcement officers on your Facebook page. They put some pretty colorful things out there sometimes. And I think to myself, oh, I should share that. And then my wife says, no, no, you shouldn't. But this was shared on a Facebook page of a law enforcement officer here in Callous County. And I think it speaks to the multiple sacrifices that they make every day, every week, every month on our behalf. It's entitled, Why I Became a Cop. The first one is, I do not enjoy sleeping. The second one is, I like working holidays. I like a stress-free work environment. I enjoy non-law enforcement people who know exactly how I should do my job. I really appreciate the pay scale. Because I love doing a lot of paperwork. I love having to go to court on my day off. Working days, then working nights, then working days, then working nights is a real blast. And the last one is, the universal community appreciation is overwhelming. And it just points to the multiple sacrifices that they make in their lives and the lives of their families, their spouses, their children, every, every week. And so we appreciate that. And then, of course, in this time, we think of the ultimate sacrifice that they make. Commissioner Dahl, you mentioned 165. So you think about that, almost every other day in the United States, a law enforcement officer loses their life. And I have an app on my phone, most law enforcement, it's called the Officer Down Memorial Page. And so we're given notifications every day when an officer loses their life. And also the K-9 officers that are so important. And we're going to remember them too next Wednesday on the 14th. And so we like to bathe our law enforcement officers in prayer. And so I just like to read what's called the Police Officers Prayer. "Lord, I ask for courage, courage to face and conquer my own fears, courage to take me where others will not go. I ask for strength, strength of body to protect others and strength of spirit to lead others. I ask for dedication, dedication to my job to do it well, dedication to my community to keep it safe. Give me, Lord, concern for others who trust me and compassion for those who need me. And please, Lord, through it all, be at my side, amen." So thank you so much for your support and concern for So thank you so much for your support and concern for our Calis County sheriffs. And we thank Sheriff Thurman for his great work. And, and for the deputies, you know, we think of, in nineteen forty eight, Francis Cohen lost his life here in Kelso, Kelso Officer. And then in two thousand sixteen, Chief Randy Gibson died while working in Kalama. And then, of course, Justin DeRozier in April of twenty nineteen. We just remembered his, his passing a month or so ago in April. And then a law enforcement officer who didn't die in the line of duty was Chief Bob Hoyer, who died just recently, who was chief in Castle Rock. And that was very meaningful to us in the chaplaincy because Bob was on our board from two thousand four to two thousand seventeen. So we knew, and he was a dear guy and a gracious man. And so we mourn his loss at this time as well. So thank you so much for your support.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your support.
What time, what time does the, does it say what time it starts? That's what I wanted to know right there.
It's the, the candlelight vigil is May fourteenth. It's at seven to eight P.M. and it's at Ari Long Park. Okay? And gentlemen, I know we approved yesterday, but since we're in a business meeting and it is a resolution, I'd take a formal motion and just.
I move approval of the proclamation, the resolution. And I don't, there's not a number on there, but the proclamation before the board for the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking for the National Police Week.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. I'll just call for vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, takes care, thank you. It takes care of official stuff. Thank you, gentlemen. Well, continue along consent agenda here. We have calls for bids for countywide delineator, delineator projects scheduled for June ninth, two thousand twenty five. This is, we get federal safety dollars for this. It's probably going to be in the neighborhood of a hundred and eighty plus thousand dollars. Delineators are those, they're plastic or fiberglass and they, they stand up and they have the reflector on the side of the road. So it kind of does out what the side of the road is. We're expanding our interlocal agreement between the city of Castle Rock and Calis County. We do building permits and stuff for them now. And we're adding flood, flood plain management administration to that agreement. Interlocal agreement between Metro and Calis County to provide Metro with emergency landfill disposal options for two of their transfer stations. We actually started this agreement back in two thousand seventeen with the Eagle Crest Fire when Metro couldn't get up I eighty four. And they worked out agreement with our landfill to bring stuff up. And, and that has been in place since two thousand seventeen. And this is just an additional five-year agreement with them. It's kind of all over the board. There's really no set amount. It's just on whatever, if they can't get up eighty four for whatever reason, they bring some stuff up. So it kind of bounces around, but we help them with that. Out of five, we have a data sharing agreement between Calis County Emergency Medical Service District Number One and the Office of Washington State Auditor to ensure compliance with the handling of confidential information. This, this just gives us the ability to share some information to facilitate an audit by the state of Washington. It's normal practice, nothing unusual here. Bid award to Gardner Rock Inc. and L. Rock Industries for the purchase of road servicing materials for the period of May first twenty five through April thirtieth of two thousand twenty six. We brought this before. And, and if you remember, these were people bid and we really take all bids because it depends on what part of the county we're working in to who will get, a lot of times get rock from. These two providers in the Toodle and Toledo area. So I know we're looking at putting that out again and seeing if we can get some down in the south, which we usually do, but that's what that is. And then we had vouchers in an amount of nine hundred and eighty eight thousand, nine forty seven and twenty eight cents. And that's consent agenda. Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. One last time, chance for comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for both those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Upcoming events, we have nothing tomorrow. Everything scheduled for tomorrow has been rescheduled. So now there are no commissioner meetings tomorrow on the seventh. We will have district court, that's been rescheduled to May fourteenth at two Thursday, at two thirty. And the mediation center has been moved to May twenty eighth at two, two thirty. Okay. Anything else of importance? We did have ecology in last, last Wednesday. And just, we've been trying to just continue conversations with them on a quarterly basis. They just, Bobbick and Shawna joined us again like they have in the past. They did mention that their new director, and I forget the dates that he was down in this area. He's not coming by the county, but he's down in the area. The new director will be taking a tour of this area. Bobbick did say he was hoping to have some time to show him some of our issues out on Toodle Park Road with the erosion type stuff. So I don't know if that'll happen. He did say, and, and we, and I think they enjoyed it as much as we did, that this is the first director they've had in a long time that's not an attorney. We gave him kudos for that, so. Anything else of significance as last week do you think of? Or you want to share? Other than that, we'll open up to you. If you have something you want to talk to us about? Yes, sir. How are you? Good. I'm real, real fine. Make sure that green light's on. There's, okay.
Pull, pull that mic down in front of you there, Dick.
Yes, sir.
There you go.
It's good to be home for a variety of reasons.
Is your green light on? No, right, right at the bottom in the middle, right about where it says, Mike.
Ah.
There you go.
Okay. So I'd like to talk about my cowboy hat. Steve and I are old friends. We've known each other for forty years. He wears his cowboy hat because he's, I think he's bald. I wear my cowboy hat because it's a tribute to Carol Shelby.
Oh, yeah.
So anyway, I have two close friends. Mr. Dahl is a political friend, but I'm sure he will become, become a personal friend before this is over. Arne Martinson is my friend. Steve Farrell is my close friend. I have three close friends. One is Teresa Purcell. The other is Rosemary Sepola. And the other is Marie Perez. Rosemary gave me the name Sugar Daddy. I've given fifty thousand dollars to Democratic Party this year. And so she says, why are you friends with that son of a bitch? Martinson, I'll never know, she says, but since you've been a big contributor, I'll let you have it. I that's mainly what I want to talk about today. I want to talk about law enforcement. I want to talk about Andy Hamilton. Andy Hamilton has a friend, mutual friend by the name of Patty Shields, Shields Stevens. She was the record clerk at Kelso Police Department. About two years ago, I have a friend who is my caregiver. She is schizophrenic. And I went to her house and she was agitated. And I talked to her provider of her medical care, her psychiatric care for about an hour. And I was getting nowhere. And excuse my language, but I said, fuck you guys. I says, I'm calling nine one one. Within fifteen minutes, there was a young police officer from Kelso and his partner. And he says, what's going on? I says, well, I says, Mary is schizophrenic. She's agitated. He says, is she a threat? Did she threaten you? He says, is she a threat to herself? I says, no, she's just agitated. He says, is she a flight risk? And I says, no, her car is in the garage. And I was talking to him on the outside of the porch. And just then Mary locked the doors. And so he says, well, he says, where are the exits? He says, one at the front door and there's one in the garage. My point is that in the course of a half hour, life was possibly saved. Mary had a Glock, not a real Glock, one of these BB gun, whatever. I have fear of two things. One is handguns, the other is snakes. They should never sell those. To make a long story short, Mary has been on her meds. She is successful. She's leading a good life. And she is one of my closest friends. I appreciate telling you this story.
We appreciate you coming by. It's always good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Anything else?
Good morning. I would like to just review with you the West Side Highway issue that there's a big block of road that is not there except gravel. And I can't remember the, what road is that?
Yeah.
Are you familiar with it?
Yeah.
And I realize it's a state highway. Is there anything that you folks can do to coerce the state to get something done? Because there are people actually now going into the other lane around that. And I see that as a real safety issue, especially for me because I'm going to have to quit driving that road because it's kind of scary facing a head-on traffic. So is there anything you folks have power to do?
Where's it at?
It's a, what would you say? It's probably three miles from Four Corners headed this way, somewhere in that area, right, right before.
Camelot.
It just passed Camelot, between Camelot and Waters Road.
Waters Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you can't miss it. There's signs that say caution.
Culvert went out. They don't let big trucks come down the road anymore.
That's what the signs are for.
Yeah.
There are some signs.
Trying to figure out why those were up.
But it's, it isn't that it's been there. It's been there for what, a couple of months now? And I just wondered if we have no priority.
I don't know what their schedule is. We don't usually have a lot of pull with Wash Dot. I, I, I maybe can ask, I can ask Public Works, maybe even check with Wash Dot and see if they have a schedule so we can let people know when, when they fix that. I think it's bigger than just repaving. I think they have to do some work on the, Culvert is my guess.
Yeah. Do they realize the safety?
But I, I agree with you. It's, it's, it's a bad spot.
Yeah, we can go the highway, but, you know, we still pay taxes on it, so.
Or you can go around Sandy Bend, but that's kind of a long way around, too.
Okay, I just wondered what you mean you about it. I didn't know if you were.
But we'll ask a couple of things and see what we can come up with. Okay. Anything else?
Good morning. Is it bright green?
Okay, now it is. I have a question, but I'm not sure if it would be addressed to Kelly because of the meeting last week. And it was a really good one and helpful information that we received.
Are you talking about Board of Health?
Board of Health.
Okay.
So I don't know if I can ask you because you were the chairperson last week for Kelly?
Well, yeah, you can.
Okay, so there was, I don't think it was formally on the agenda. I don't remember, but it was going to be a conversation with Gina James. And we missed out on that. So I wondered if that could be possibly put back on the agenda either for the Tuesday meeting or back on for the health meeting.
Yeah, I, in fact, Kelly's coming in and chatting with me today. And I think we'll, we'll probably talk about that a little bit. I, I, I think it needs to be on a Board of, I don't care what it is. We can do it either one, but I think it needs to be on a Board of Health meeting. And why we kind of stepped that back, I'd ask her to maybe address some things. But she didn't really have budget yet from the state. So we're trying to see what the, the state is going to do and, and what's going to be provided before she can get some clearer answers. But I think it's a good topic and haven't forgotten about it. And I think we'll certainly address that.
Thank you.
And just on that also, Mr. Chair, real quick. When Trinidad was here, he talked about us becoming the regional. In our meeting yesterday, we found out that we got the preliminary approval.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, so we're, we're one more step into, into that approval process.
Oh, very nice, good information. Yeah.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, as always, we, we appreciate your participation. We appreciate seeing you on Tuesdays. And remember, no meetings tomorrow. And we'll be back next, next week. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Yeah, we, there are some, there are some requirements that we have to meet.